The City of New Britain. Building Hope Together for a Greater Community.
We'll formally begin the public participation at 7:01 PM for May 24th, 2017. This is public participation for a regular meeting for this day in month. Common Council session, we have to remind everyone who would speak, if you have not signed up, we will certainly go around the room. Please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address. Thank you. First on the list is Jerry Amodio.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jerry Amodio and I live at 500 Sheddham Meadow Avenue. My day job still is the Executive Director of the New Britain Downtown District. Tonight I come before you as the Downtown District is presenting its budget for 2017-2018, a copy of which you have before you in our annual report. And I have sent each member of the Common Council this budget over the past several weeks. I also followed up with a personal phone call for all of you. Our budget was approved by the Downtown District at our annual meeting on Tuesday, May 23rd. As the city is the only entity with the power of taxation, the district comes before the Common Council during the city's budgetary season for adoption. The Downtown District was created by the Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 105A, Municipal Special Services Districts in 1983. On October 19th, 1983, the New Britain Common Council adopted under a new section, added under Section 2 of the ordinances of the City of New Britain, establishing the Downtown Special Services District. Under Section 6, District Revenue and Budget, Number 1, District Budget, Paragraph B, Sentence 2, which states, "In accordance with Section 7-339RD of the Connecticut General Statutes, it shall be the obligation of the Common Council to impose the recommended levy as a municipal levy, and such levy shall be, in addition to the regular levy, and it shall be the obligation of the city to collect such levy for the benefit of the district." This was adopted by the Common Council on October 21st and was signed by Mayor William J. McNamara, City of New Britain, 1983. As mentioned above, the members of the Downtown District have duly approved the Downtown District 2017-18 budget, which comes before you tonight. The recommended, the approved recommended levy for the district is 4.2 mils, the same as last year's rate. I've appeared before you many times and reported on the activities provided by the district to enhance the central business district and the health and well-being of the city in general. If it is the desire of the council, I'm happy to discuss those at greater length tonight also. I'll be hanging around. This coming year, we hope to expand our services to partner with the city in selling its new marketing merchandise, promote our facade improvement program a little more, a lot more, look into a business startup grant program similar to what Bristol Municipal Government has done, partner with the city and the New Britain Industrial Museum on the guided historical walking tours, tours, as the unguided tours are housed at the visitor's center now. If it obliges, I have one more sentence. Partner with the city in purchasing more trash receptacles for the downtown, which I walked around the city with the head of Public Works the other day to locate, and we're looking at pricing on that, and provide marketing assistance for the new residential units being built in downtown. This is my seventh time presenting the Downtown District budget. Thank you for your support over those years and for your support tonight.
Thank you for the compound complex sentence, Mr. Amodio.
Are you an English teacher? Because I'm married to a math teacher, so I don't know.
I couldn't help that, sir. It's okay. Next up to test my patience will be Don Crockett. Come on. It's one of those days. I apologize, Mr. Crockett. Go for it, please. Thank you.
All right. Don Crockett, 195 Hartford Road. I'm here to make a personal, give you, offer a personal invite to all of you. This year, Connecticut Trails Day is on June 3rd. That's a Saturday, and we're working with Parks and Rec. If you look on page 39 in the lower right, this is New Britain, and there's an educational walk at, from 9:30 to 11:30 at A.W. Stanley, well, it says A.W. Stanley Nature Trail. So Nancy Nigerian and I are going to be co-leading the walk, and we're covering both, Nancy's really focusing on the history, a little bit of geology, and I'm doing a little bit of history, and then mostly nature. And we're going to make a full loop around the pond, and in your pack on the last page, it shows proposed potential solution to complete the accessible trail around the full pond. And that's a project that's being managed by Public Works, and we're working with CJ the Engineer and Mark Moriarty, and that's been a great process, and you know, a lot of, and they're very flexible and willing to work with us and figure out, there's two endpoints, they're like, they're open to how we complete that. But the goal is to have something that's accessible, so people can make it all the way around the pond. And you'll notice on there that there's actually, and CJ didn't notice this, but I'm being a fast track rider every day, it would be possible to have an accessible bus stop that would feed directly into this trail with a little bit of additional cost. So we're hoping that we can make that happen. So, and then, the only other thing is, I'm a little bit concerned about the proposed A.W. Pool Expansion, well, renovation, replacement. It seems like, rather than replacing things in place, which really should be the least expensive, that everything's being moved around, and one of the Friends members said they're terraforming, so it's like they're sculpting the landscape. And so all this money is being spent on moving dirt around, rather than adding recreational features. And if you look at the color image of, on the top, it actually lists the types of things that are being removed to get the budget from an average bid of $8 million with a low of 6.5, a high of $10 million for a bonded $5 million. You know, this was like double, you know, the highest bid. And so they're eliminating things like the splash pad, the public restroom, the slide, and meanwhile, things like ornamental trees, which are not there now, are being left. There are tens of thousands of trees in the back of that park. Why are we spending money on ornamental trees when we're eliminating recreational features? That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Crockett, for your proper use of semicolons as well. I just have to do that today. Christiana Smith, is it Christiana or Christiana? I apologize. Okay.
Hello. My name is Christiana Smith. I live at 160 Washington Street. Do you need to know what apartment I live in?
Not necessarily.
Okay. I'm okay with that. Hi. I am on the Equity Steering Committee that was formed by the Coalition for New Britain Youth. We had a training on, in late March, and we've been meeting, I think we've had three or four meetings since then. Tomorrow, we're having a follow-up meeting from 4:00 to 6:00 with our trainer, talking about next steps for how to create a systemic plan to address equity issues in the city. And I think it would be wonderful if some of you were there. So if you want more information about that, let me know. It's tomorrow from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And I know Alderman Salerno has been there for a couple of them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the audience to the council? Anyone else who would like to speak in public participation to the council? Third and last time, anyone who'd like to speak for public participation at the council? Seeing none, double checking my time here. We are closed public participation at 7:12 PM. Thank you very much. Any members of the council have any comments they'd like to make? Seeing none, we'll be moving into the regular council meeting shortly. Thank you.
All right. I would like to, we're all here, I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the New Britain Common Council. The date is May 24th, 2017. The time is 7:20 PM. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Naples.
Here.
Naples.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present.
Rosado.
Here.
Salvio.
Sanchez.
Here.
Sanders.
Present.
Salerno.
Here.
13 present.
Thank you very much. Because you want to say something about New and Britain. Yeah. All my Soleranos for the.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, through you. Just the two of our Aldermen are not present. Obviously, Mr. Naples is out of the country, enjoying himself with his dear wife, and Alderman Salvio also, he had a slight accident and is fine, and sends his regrets.
Thank you, Alderman. Can we all please rise to the invocation, followed by the Fledge of Allegiance? Mr. Clerk.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, we give pause to remember the brave veterans who have served our city, state, or country, some giving their lives, a few physically or emotionally wounded. Look down on our remaining World War II and Korean veterans as they await your heavenly gates. May we always remember their noble deeds, dedicated service, devotion to country, and sacrifice for others. We ask this in thy name. Amen.
And I pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we start this evening, just a couple of things I wanted to say, although she is not here with us this evening, it is Kim's 30th birthday today. Everybody knows Kim Jennings from my office. She's currently enjoying dinner at Star Polska with her family, but if she were here, we would give her a big hug and sing her happy birthday. She got not one, but two cakes today, and we'll add a third one tonight. She's a very important person. Happy birthday, Kim.
You said 40th, Your Honor.
Thirty. Oh, she's going to kill you. A couple of things that I just wanted to mention as an update for everybody, and Christie, back me up on this stuff if I miss anything. We are moving through the process of the Working Cities Challenge. I know everybody has been well informed that as a finalist, we have a very unique opportunity, sponsored by the Boston Fed, to have access, to pursue funds, additional grant money aimed at increasing our workforce. Let's just use very general terms, increasing our workforce and lowering our number of unemployed individuals in the city. We participated in our first design phase last week. It was an intense day, very long day, a very productive day, though, where we got a lot accomplished, and we will have three more design phases like that as we are scheduled through the summer, and we'll submit our final application in October, November timeframe, and then, knock on wood, hopefully get word that we are a chosen community to pursue our mission of lowering our unemployment rate. We submitted the application geared towards lowering the unemployment rate towards our Hispanic community, as it is disproportionately higher in our community for one reason or another, but we have to meet as an internal group to determine the root causes of that and how we can put together a plan to fix that. So, we had our first design session. We're going to be bringing everybody together to kind of recap that. Hopefully, in the next two weeks, we'll have the next session, and it's a great, really, really great group partnering with HRA and Marlo Grapon, who is doing an incredible job at getting everybody together to coordinate on that. So, just a Working Cities Challenge update. And I believe Alderman Collins has an Innovation Places update that I think you might like to share.
So, last week, I had the pleasure of attending the final presentation of the CTNEX Board of Directors, for New Britain to have the opportunity of receiving the Innovation Places Grant. This grant application came out earlier in the year. With all the excitement we have going on in the city, we knew we had to apply right away. The initiative is being ran by the Chamber of Commerce and CCSU. I'd like to commend former Mayor Tim Stewart and Rick Mullins for the incredible job they have done getting us to this point so far, and becoming a finalist as well. Many hours have been put into envisioning the future of New Britain as an innovative place, you know, a hub of high-tech activity and jobs, a place where entrepreneurs can come and grow and take their business to the next level. After the hour-long presentation, there was a question and answer session, and then after that, we boarded a bus and we had a tour by the mayor. The mayor, I'd like to thank you, did an awesome job showcasing all the change and vision we have in targeted places that needs development here in the city. We went from downtown to Myrtle Street, to the old Stanley Works building, where we hope to redevelop as an IT data center. And then we ended over by the New Britain Museum of American Art, and then back to City Hall. The opportunities for development, infrastructure improvements are plenty. We find out next month if we receive the grant, where we will get up to $1 million a year for an extended period of time to implement the vision and make the innovation place a reality. This doesn't happen without vision. It doesn't happen without a community that is coming together, working together across all spectrums to give the future of New Britain an opportunity that we have had in many, many years. I'm glad to be a part of this initiative. I wanted to make sure all our council members were aware of what's going on, and hopefully we keep our fingers crossed that in the next few weeks, we'll have some good news and be a winner and a recipient of this grant. Thank you.
Thank you. That's grant number two that we're up for. We have a third grant that we're up for, which is called the Invest Health Grant, which is being spearheaded by the YWCA of New Britain, and that is all geared towards enhancing the health of our community and lowering the obesity rate in our children, and how we can target areas of town that need access to healthy foods and resources, and that is coming up next month as well, which has the ability to bring in additional funding on an ongoing basis for specific projects that have been outlined by the group. So, we're busy. When you don't have the money, you find it, right? You go out and you find it, and we're very proud of that. Thank you very much, Alderman Collins. Alderman Hargreaves asked for a point of personal privilege this evening as well.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Got a lot of noise over here. Well, what a busy afternoon that I had here in New Britain. I must say that we got a lot of stuff going on in the city, and I'm not, I'm not mad at not one minute of it. Okay? First of all, after work, I was able to go to the groundbreaking of the Howie House that's going to be happening over on North Street. It was a great time, was able to learn more about, and there's going to be a lot of supportive housing that supports the mayor's Build Hope Together Plan and eliminating chronic homelessness in the city. So that's going to be a key point. That project's been in the making for years, and we finally broke ground, so that's great. We thank all the funders that contribute to the Connecticut Department of Housing, the American Savings Foundation, as well as a slew of other donors. After that, I had the liberty of going down to the new food truck that our school district has. They had it outside of Beehive Stadium. It's called the Buzzin' Bistro, and I can tell you that the food is absolutely delicious. Okay?
Yes.
They had some good food there. It looks absolutely beautiful, the truck on the outside. They did a great job with the design, and after that, they had the baseball game, which New Britain has their final regular season game before they go into the postseason, after a 14-5 record that they have right now. Okay? Hopefully, after tonight, they can make that record 15-5. And then I had the opportunity to go down to Be-Beautiful, Wana Hill Park, where the Parks Recreation Department had their conclusion of their after-school programs with their annual children's festival. Hundreds of kids, lots of games, activities, they had free hot dogs and chips and waters for the kids. It was a great time. Everybody was enjoying themselves. Parks Recreation, they do a great job. I did their after-school programs for like 11 years. This is the first year I didn't do it, so it was a great time to see all my, my former colleagues and the kids. It's always great to see the kids out there having a great time. So, I mean, that was wonderful, and there's just nothing shy there. In New Britain, you can experience the new each and every day. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes. Thank you, Alderman. We got to pull that tape. We're going to use that in a commercial. Eric is just beaming from ear to ear back there. Thank you very much. And that all happened in a span of what, three and a half hours? Yeah. Yeah. We had the ribbon cutting today at a new Connecticut Cabinetry Company that's coming, just moved in. They moved here from Meriden. They chose to relocate from Meriden to New Britain.
Yep.
Sorry. Sorry, Meriden. But that's bringing quite a handful of jobs to the area as well. So, that's good. When any, oh. The Soleranos are celebrating a very important milestone today. Dan and Mary Ann are celebrating their 30th wedding anniversary today. Wow. Yep. Mary Ann deserves a standing ovation.
This is for you, Mary Ann.
I really, I really hope she's watching. Congratulations.
Through you, Your Honor, if I might.
Sure.
Since you opened the door of opportunity. I think that, I just want to paraphrase a note that I actually sent to my wife today, that we make a really good team. She has the brains and the beauty, and I got to choose the best wife any man could ever have. Thank you.
Oh.
It works for 30 years.
Let anyone else like a point of personal privilege this evening? Alderman Carlosi.
Since we're talking about our loved ones and all those things, Mom, happy birthday on Friday. I love you. 87 years. God bless you, Mommy.
We love Mama Carlosi. Happy birthday, Mama. All right. Okay.
Your Honor.
Alderman. Alderman Salerno.
My wife, Mary Ann, said thank you.
Oh. Forgot to wash it. I have no minutes this evening, Alderman G. Antonio, correct? So, we will go right into amendments to the agenda.
Thank Your Honor. I make a motion to add item number seven to the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Polkowski. We have an addition of item number seven. And any questions or comments on that? Everybody has access to that. We've all seen that. All those, Mr. Clerk is going to call the roll on the addition to the agenda.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Barlow.
Yes.
Collins.
Davis.
Hart.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Salerno.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, we have petitions this evening.
Yes, ma'am.
It's getting warmer out.
First one is from all the persons, G. Antonio and Pabon. Please conduct a traffic study on Worcester Street in the area of Amy Lane and Dogwood Drive. Residents have complained of increased speeding typically in the hours after 8:00 PM.
What's on that to the police commission? Thank you.
Okay. From Alderman Sanders. Please conduct a feasibility study for a centralized dog park within the City of New Britain.
We can have a conversation about that offline.
Please have the report prepared and submitted to be included on the agenda for next week. No, July 12th. At the Common Council.
Sure. We can refer that to Parks and Rec, and we can have a conversation too, because we've been talking about that for quite some time.
Okay. Next one's from Alderman Salerno. Please have a dozen roses delivered, no, I'm sorry.
Already done, Your Honor.
Please have the police department and the police department traffic division to consider a combination of surveillance and possible stop sign installations for multiple citizen complaints of excessive speeding on Pond Street, Brook Street, Mill Street, and in and around South Main Street. The complaints have been made for months. Several school stop, school bus stop locations are affected.
I think we just had a car ex, bad car accident over there just last week. To the police commission as well. Thank you.
Last one's from Alderman Pabon. Please reinstall no parking sites on the right side of Atlantic Street from 43 to the end. Emergency vehicles and snow removal vehicles cannot pass.
To the, we'll put that to Public Works.
Okay. And that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Were they supposed to be there and have been taken down?
Yeah, they've been taken down.
Oh, okay. Thank you. It's funny how those things happen. From 43. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Onto the consent agenda, Alderman G. Antonio.
Thank Your Honor. The items F, J, and K are the only ones that I am aware of anyone asking off of consent. Therefore, I make a motion to accept and adopt a consent agenda consisting of items A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, L, M, and N.
Second.
Have a second.
So, A through N without F, J, and K.
F, J, and K are off consent. That has been seconded by Alderman Salerno. Any questions or comments on that? Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Yes.
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 Collins.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hargreaves.
Yes.
Pabon.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Rosado.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Salerno.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. The first item I have on request is item F.
Thank Your Honor. Motion to accept report F.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Collins.
Thank Your Honor. The reason for taking this off, at least my reason, I know a couple others had asked for this off of consent. There needs to be a change made to this report. In the report, the title and two places in the report is a dollar amount of $35,000. That dollar amount should be to $32,500. Is that just a Scrivener's error, Scrivener's change, or does that need to be an amendment to the report?
Technically, you're not supposed to amend the report, but may I ask, Alderman, the $32,500, I mean, what was approved? Is that inaccurate? Is the $32,500 what the?
We will have.
What the Water Commission approved on May 9th?
Yes. The Board of Water Commission has approved $32,500. It is just an error. The original price was $32,000, $35,000. I negotiated it down to $32,500.
All right. In that case, I would suggest that it just be noted in the record as a Scrivener's error, since no one's really taking any affirmative action to change anything.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, you got that? Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Any other questions or comments on that? Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you, Your Honor, through you. Ray?
Oh, sorry, Ray. No, not you, Ray.
Yes. I'm sorry.
It's up to you if you want to stay there or not. Maybe you can sit in the front row. So, this is a contract to Leonard Engineering. It's a consulting contract. Can you just give us a synopsis of how many contracts we've given, or how many contracts we currently have ongoing with Leonard Engineering?
Ongoing right now, we have, the only one that we have right now is the study for the Tilcon Quarry.
Okay. And do you know how many contracts we've given at Leonard Engineering over the last year or two?
We've had a couple of dam contracts that did some inspection for us. They did inspection of all our dams. That was in the last year or two. We had to do those. It was required. They came up with a, they have a dam engineer, and we're required to do that by DEP regulations every couple of years. Prior to that, they've always handled our water supply plan. They've always given us one of the best rates when it comes to water supply plans. If we, and if we count it all up, I believe they've done two full water supply plans, three amendments, probably five or six contracts for dam engineering over the last, I would say, 15 years since I've been here.
Oh, last 15 years.
Yeah.
All right. It just, it just seems like we get quite a few of these coming in, you know, $20,000 I, I understand, but I don't know if there were any that were overlapping, like they're still working on one and now a new, a new contract or something else.
Well, they're two separate items. The, the quarry study, uh, the environmental study is very different from this. This is encompassing our entire water supply. They have all the data. They created a water model for us. They've been doing this since, I think, two thousand and two was the first year that they started doing our water supply modeling.
So we, this is not something that we bid out or we send it to other bidders? We just?
It, this is the first time that I've had to deal with the actual contracting of it. Um, I believe that it's, might have been bid out back in two thousand and two and it's just been done as an on-call engineering, but they are significantly lower than most of the firms. The other advantage that they have is they've done it before, so they have a lot of this data already in place. It would not be the startup cost for another firm to do it. And they meet the standard. They do, they do the, the work that's required.
Very good. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Alderman Sanders.
Uh, thank you, your honor. I have a quick question. Uh, I've heard a lot about the, the no bid contracts, Leonard Engineering and all this stuff. And my understanding is that Leonard is the on-call, uh, engineer. And I, I believe that, that at some point there was a bidding process, uh, which is, which is allowing us to give them this work. And I don't know if that can be corrected or verified tonight, um, but I know that every time we've, we've heard something come before us, it's been the on-call services. We have many different contractors and vendors throughout the city that bid at one time, it may be for th, uh, one year, maybe for three years. And that's the person that we call because they were the low bidder, uh, so we go to them. And then every several years we would, we would rebid out those on-call services. And, and I believe that that's what this is. Um, I also would like to point out that, um, there were, as, as a new liaison to the Water Department, I was at several meetings so far. Um, and I believe it was Attorney Paul Zegorski who questioned some of the, uh, things that were being studied for Tilcon, possibly coinciding with the water study. And I think that's what helped, uh, Mr. Espanda reduce that cost because there was some redundancies, um, in that as well. I'm not sure if, if there could have been a little bit more, but there, there was a reduction in the overall price. So I just wanted to kind of point that out on the record. And if, if anybody can verify at some point that Leonard is the on-call engineering service and what their period or term of contract is would be probably greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, Leonard is on our, there was a number of firms that are on call engineering. They have different specialties. Leonard is one that has been on the on-call engineering list, I would probably say, ten years, if not longer. So we've been working with them at on-call services.
Which leads me to believe, uh, just to respond to Mr. Espanda, that, that, that they have been the lowest bidder or the lowest cost for on-call services.
Um, I believe at the beginning they were. Uh, this was something that I had to get done quickly. It also has, we have, um, because of the drought issues and new regulations that are coming on board, we have a new component to this plan. It's called stream flow regulations. And we're required, we're going to be required to release water from our reservoirs to make sure that the brux and streams that are connected to our reservoirs don't dry out. So we have an important study to do. And this is going to have a big effect on our safe yield. How much water is actually going to be available for us? And I wanted to get this done as soon as possible. And again, I, Leonard has, every time that I've seen them come out for bid, they've always been one of the lowest. I did not do it this time. I did not put it out to bid this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Espanda. Those new regulations are not going to be a picnic when it comes to releasing our water into the streams. That's going to be something that's tough. So I've heard a little bit about it. I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Yeah. This body, just to remind everybody, we do approve an on-call engineering list every year. And anybody is welcome to be added to it. They just have to submit the request to our purchasing agent.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Any other questions from Mr. Espanda on this? Thank you for negotiating a lower price.
I do what I can.
We appreciate you. I know, you might want to say in the front. Um, any further questions? All those in favor of accepting the report signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item J. Alderman Carlosi? Maybe? No? Would some, nobody wants to bring up item J? Okay, my.
Your honor.
Yes, Alderman.
Motion to accept, uh, report J.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Uh, your honor, I am introducing this item. It was Alderman Carlosi that asked for it off of consent.
Okey dokey. Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you, your honor. So, uh, as we discussed in leadership, it appears in the past that this item has been in the form of resolution. Tonight it's in the form of a, a report, um, regardless of the format. Mr. Espanda, these two items are being reported to the council, but in reality, your Board of Water Commissioners are the ones that make the decisions on both of these items regardless of what this council feels.
Um, not on the sewer rates. They would do it on the water rates.
Okay.
The sewer rates would be done by the Public Works Board. And, uh, I think Mark would be the one to answer those questions.
So then same question to you, Mr. Moriarty. On the sewer rates, if this council says no, if this council does not accept the report, does this new sewer rate go into effect regardless?
In past years, that's the, when the council hasn't accepted the report, the sewer rate has gone into effect. That's happened multiple times.
Your honor, through you to our, to our counselor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman, with respect to the sewer, not the water, but the sewer use rates. Under Connecticut statutes, the municipality designates a body to act as the water pollution control authority for that municipality. We have designated the board to act as the water pollution control authority. And therefore, the board is the, uh, is the, the body that sets the rates with respect to sewer use. And the council cannot override anything the board does. And that's pursuant to the statute. So I just wanted to clarify for everybody.
So if the council says no to J and the Board of Public Works has said yes, it becomes reality?
Correct.
And then jumping ahead to K, if the council says no, says no to K, which is the water rates?
Right.
And the Board of, and the Board of Water Commissioners votes, has, has decided to, to put that into effect, that goes into effect as well?
That's a little more complicated.
Okay, we'll talk about, then let's leave it to J.
There is no statute that mirrors the sewer use statute. Again, you have a statute that says that the dou, the water pollution control authority under the act, for each municipality, sets the sewer rates. So that's a statute, nothing that, that we can do can override that, uh, to the extent that we've already designated that board to act as the WPCA for the town. With respect to water, it's a little more complicated. We've got various charter provisions. And we can talk about that now or in a moment if you'd like.
In a moment, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you.
Uh, I got, your honor, through you then to Mr. Moriarty. On the sewer use, when was the last time that we had an increase on the, on the sewer uses?
Last year.
Last year. And the time before that?
It's increased several years, um, mostly increases before this year. Almost entirely associated with costs we've absorbed from Matabasa. This year it's a little different.
Can you elaborate?
And this year, um, and it, and it's actually still related to Matabasa. The communities, um, the Matabasa communities, as part of the plant expansion and the federal funding that they received, the EPA came in and did an assessment of each community sewers. And basically put each of the communities on a consent order. And associated with that consent order, there's a massive amount of work we have to do for compliance. So indirectly, it's still like we would not be under this consent order if it wasn't for the Matabasa treatment plant expansions. And we're having pretty massive costs every year that we're facing, um, two million dollars a year of, of costs just for compliance over the next several years. Even more than that right now with some of the initial study work and consulting work.
We're still billing on a six-month cycle, is that correct, your honor? Or Mr. Buzlowski left? Are we still billing on the six month? I, I know the charter now gave us opportunities to do it differently.
We haven't made any changes to that yet.
You haven't made any changes, your honor?
Correct.
So, so on a six-month basis, your average, average household in the city of New Britain, by adopting J, what does that mean to their sewer bill?
I forgot the number. It was, it was about, I think it was about forty dollars, but I'm, I'm shooting from the hip. I did see that number. I don't have that number with me for.
So about forty dollars a bill, eighty dollars, eighty dollars a year?
I, I think so. I'm shooting a little from the hip here. I did look at this, uh, several months ago when we were first, um, kind of trying to assess it. We looked at it for, um, a, a big industrial user and a, like just standard, I think we may have looked at the mayor's household or something. But we looked at, I like, and we, we looked at an average family household. And, but the, and the thing of it is, is like, these costs are, are, we are faced with these costs. There's no way to get around it. It is an increase that's going to impact residents. Um, we hired, when we did have the EPA first working with them on negotiating consent order, we hired, uh, CDM to, who had handled, working with EPA with other municipalities to try and negotiate our best possible outcome and lower our costs and lower our risk. And we were fairly successful in that, but I mean, it's, we're faced with some major, major investment we have to make on our sewer lines.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. I was going to say it also depends on the household's use.
Well, that's why I said an average.
If they catch a tapeworm, they might be paying a little bit more. Alderman Sanders.
Thank you. As, as a liaison to the Public Works Department, and, uh, you'll, we'll see a little later on tonight, uh, some of the money we're spending to help correct these problems that we're having. And, and the DEP and the EPA are mandating a lot on our backs, um, faster than we can handle. We're going to be bonding our children at some point, um, to fix these problems. Our infrastructure is crumbling. And, and the EPA mandates are coming down faster than we can make the repairs. Um, so I do not want to see any increase in these rates. I don't want to see them in the water rates. But unfortunately, we are, our hands are kind of tied here. Um, we have to keep our infrastructure going. Um, I've been pretty involved with some of the things that the Public Works is doing and the Water Department recently. So I'm open to anybody for, uh, questions or comments. And I know Alderman Polkowski has a lot of knowledge on this as well. But I, again, I think none of us want to see these rates go up, but we're at a point where our hands are tied. And this is something that's going to have to get done little by little. But again, even this small increase is not going to solve the problem. We will be bonding for this in the future. I don't want to do it, but I'm just kind of giving you that heads up. Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
I'm just waiting to see you crawl under your desk. That's all. Um, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of accepting the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
For the record?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, for the record? Ma'am, me? Alderman Carlosi, Alderman Sanchez, and Alderwoman Blackard knows I'm accepting the report. Right, yes. Motion carries. Um, the next, uh, item is K.
Your honor, make a motion to accept report K.
Second.
Accepting report K, seconded by Alderman Sanders.
Your honor, again, I am merely introducing this item. It was Alderman Carlosi who asked for it off of consent.
Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you, your honor, and thank you, Alderman Giantonio. So, Mr. Espanda, I guess the same questions. A, whatever action the council takes on this, and this will be probably to our, our counselor as well. If we say no, does this still go into effect? And if you?
Um, it's a little bit of a confusing issue. I actually put some guiding on, guidance on this, but there is a section in the charter that I brought to the attention of the Assistant Corporation Counsel.
Alderman, so this is, this one here is a lot more complicated. So what you're doing tonight, first of all, is just receiving a report regarding the rates. There is a charter provision, and there are charter provisions that say that the Board of Water Commissioners needs to estimate the expenses and the receipts for the fol, for the, uh, following year and charge the rates accordingly. There's also a charter provision that says that the, the rates are to be approved by, as approved by the common council. The word, exact wording, I think, is, um, that the Board of Water Commissioners shall charge the water rents for the ensuing year in accordance with the rates or charges so approved by the common council. So it would appear that the rates as set by the Board of Water Commissioners do need approval by the common council. That doesn't mean that the common council can't receive the report tonight. In fact, the, this council, this body will be in compliance with that section I just referenced. When and if it adopts a budget and approves the enterprise fund budget. The enterprise fund budget from the, uh, Water Department will have the rates in it. And that technically gets approved by this body. So for tonight's purposes, all you're doing is receiving a report regarding the estimated receipts for next year. But you will have an opportunity to vote on it when you're voting, in, you know, conjunction with voting on the budget. Now specifically whether you have any power to make any changes to that, um, that's less than clear, especially at this point. I don't think you can, uh, particularly because you, we're dealing with an enterprise fund here. So I don't think that you can. But, um, what you're doing tonight is not final. So.
So, your honor, um, my other, back, back to my other questions that I raised at the last time, is I believe once again that this was in the form of resolution in the past. When you, when it's presented to us as a report, and so there's this argument about what is a report and what is a resolution. A resolution says the city will take such action. This report, it's basically two paragraphs. And I'm going to read it so everyone knows what we're actually voting on. It says on May ninth, so it's regarding the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen drinking water rates. On May ninth, twenty-seventeen, the New Britain Board of Water Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting voted to approve a water rate increase of five percent for all water users. Then the Britain Board of Public, of Water Commissioners approved a new rate of twenty-nine point twenty-one per one thousand cubic feet, up from twenty-seven point eight-two per one thousand cubic feet for all customers within the city of New Britain and all towns and political subdivisions with agreements to buy water from the New Britain Water Department. A seventy percent surcharge remains in effect for all out-of-town properties directly served by the New Britain Water Department. Raymond Ramon Espanda. Um, and, and that's all. That's a report. So it doesn't give us the normal resolution language of therefore, whereas, 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 therefore. You know, the Britain Common Council votes, blah, blah. So, so I have a little bit of an issue and I appreciate the counselors. As he says, a little complicated, you know, of, you know, how are we doing this? And then you have another opportunity and the enterprise fund and all that. But I, I, I don't appreciate personally the format in which it's sent to us because it's simply a report. And so all we're doing, if you, if you, if you listen to what Alderman Giantonio said, is make a motion to accept the report. Not approve, but to accept. So I have a problem with the format in which it's presented. Because how am I going to say no that I accept the re, I, I just said no that I accept, I would not accept the other report, okay? And so the argument among counselors, or Alderman here, is how can you say no to accept a report? You either accepted it or you didn't accept it. And it's pretty hard to just vote no. But I'm going to vote no because I don't think that this is in the proper format to meet all the qualifications. Now, yes, we will be voting on a budget on June the sixth, I believe, your honor. Uh, and on there is the enterprise fund and all of that that the Attorney Bizarro was referring to. But I, I don't like, I, I don't like how it's presented. And I don't think it gives me the opportunity to really do my job and, and the council its, its job. And a five percent increase in water, and the last time we did this was how many years ago?
Ten years ago.
Ten years ago for the water. Well, not as bad as the sewer. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other Aldermen like to comment, questions? Alderman Giantonio.
Your honor, a quick question through you to Attorney Bizarro. So if this was in the form of a resolution, I mean, isn't that taking the same action that we take in accepting the enterprise fund budget?
It is. And, you know, I, I, I need to, um, offer Mr. Director Espanda some protection here because I, I do believe that the reason it was submitted in this fashion was on recommendation from one of the attorneys in my office. I think Attorney Skelly had some, uh, discussions with Director Espanda. And he recommended that it be submitted in the form of a report. And the reason he did that is simply, you know, because as I just said, there, really this body doesn't do anything with this at this point in time. There's nothing that this body can do about it at this point in time. So the proper way, the proper mechanism of advising this body of what is going on and what the Board of Water Commissioners has done is to do it by way of a report. And while I, I certainly understand, uh, the good Alderman's point about, you know, being able to articulate some opposition to this, I think that can be done logistically in the same way. You just take it, do what you did tonight, take it off the consent agenda. And you can, um, you know, have, uh, the opportunity to opine and make whatever comments you like. And the vote on it really is meaningless at that point because the council could, in theory, vote no. All of you can vote no, and it does nothing. So. Um, so I do think, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that this was the appropriate way of submitting it to the council.
Thank you.
Alderman Polkowski.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to, um, speak a little on the five percent increase. Um, I know a lot of articles have been happening and, uh, been written through the Herald.
Point of order. Respectfully, I believe the, I believe the good Alderman should be recused from this discussion. Are you not an employee of the Water Department?
I am.
Thank you.
Attorney Bizarro for an opinion?
I, I try not to offer opinions with resp, with respect to ethics issues. I mean, if the Alderman thinks that he has a conflict because he's directly impacted by this, um, report, then he may want to recuse himself. And if not, you know, he can decide what's in his best interest.
I do not feel that I should recuse myself on this vote. The only, and for the record, I only recuse myself on votes for payments to contractors because I don't feel that it is correct for me to be approving any payments towards contractors that I could specifically work with. This, in this case.
If I may, Alderman?
In this.
Just for, just for the record, I, I wanted to go on record that I feel that this is something that you should be recused from. It's your decision. And then.
Thank you, Alderman Carlosi.
Thank you, your honor.
Alderman Polkowski, please proceed.
Yes, I just wanted to speak on the five percent rate increase. Um, obviously everyone has known about the drought situations that have been happening here in the, in the state, not only New Britain, but also in the state. We've asked a lot of, a lot of, uh, residents, uh, commercial businesses to, 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 sorry, to put in conservation measures for some of the water usage. And because of that, we have seen decreases in revenue. Um, also to. Also, to Alderman Sanders just mentioned previously on the sewer contract, is we do have a crumbling infrastructure. I mean, we haven't raised this rate in 10 years. I think it's about time that we start looking towards the future and creating some type of a capital improvement budget, where we could actually start investing in ourselves, where we can start rebuilding, you know, specifically from the ground up. And I just feel that this is something that is necessary, and as Director Espanda mentioned previously, this, this is 10 years in the making. So, thank you very much.
Alderman Polkowski. Alderman Salerno.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. First, I want to, I want to thank Alderman Polkowski for the eloquent points of information that I think are necessary for us to make some of the decisions we make here. My position, both in terms of whether it's the report or when it's forthcoming to us as this body, that we look at increases, particularly in terms of water, we're looking at a situation of 10 years past. Sometimes we have to make difficult decisions about voting on things we may not like. We have to buy fire trucks that cost $1.2 million, and, and taxpayers want to know, well, why do we have to buy the fire truck? Because the other one's 35 years old and it needs to be replaced. I mean, it's part of doing business. And I think that one of the things that I fully support of this process is this is not something new to anybody on this council. This discussion about water has been in the air for, well, at least the last year and a half that I can recall, and people have discussed it in and out at all levels. So, I'm just saying, I certainly am going to support it, but I think it's really important that we have due diligence in terms of some things that we vote for, even when it looks like we're voting for something that's just a plain old increase. It's not. It's about maintenance. It's about keeping, that water cost goes back to the filtration plant. That water cost goes back to the salaries and the wages of people down the road of repair. Recent stations have had issues or problems over, over time. They're going to require repair and maintenance, and this is how we're going to be able to fund that. So, I just want to just make it clear that voting for this is something that's a good thing for the city, because we have to stay on top of our efforts to do the kind of work we do here in government.
Thank you. Alderman G, Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know a lot of this talk about this particular report is, is an increase, and again, just like I said about the Sewer Department, I don't want to see an increase in the water. To Alderman Polkowski, one of the things I've noticed is, as a liaison, there is, there has been a reduction in revenues. You know, with conservation comes consequences, has been my new cliche, and it's something that has to be, you know, planned for. I think there's people on both sides of the aisle here tonight, over the past several years, that have voted to take money from the Water Department into the tunes of millions. And somehow, they need to get it back. This is not the way. It should have never been taken in the first place, but, you know, this is one of the reasons that we are here. Several years, I think it's been in the tens of millions of dollars over the past 15, 20 years possibly, that have been taken out of their infrastructure fund, which has, and now we have Mr. Espanda here being criticized for how his report is filled out. But, you know, bottom line is, is that we've had a lot of issues surrounding the water. I think you'll see tonight, we're taking some proactive measures for the future. We can't go back in the past to fix what we've done, but we should be helping Mr. Espanda as much as possible and educating ourselves on the issues that our Water Department faces. I know we've all been criticized with how the water situation has been handled, but we did everything that we could based on what we had, the tools that we had to enforce or, or restrict water usage and try and protect our assets the best we could. So, now, moving forward, we're going to be trying to do things and help our Water Department do a better job of managing those assets. You know, we can't control Mother Nature. She's been good to us this spring. We hope she keeps it up, but, you know, we appreciate everything you've done, and we have to realize what has brought us to this point as well. So, there's, there's a culmination of things that have brought us to where we are, and I know, again, you know, we're not raising taxes, but we have a water increase, we have a sewer increase, and we look at that maybe as a form of a tax or, or something of that nature, but these are realistic, real-life issues that are right in front of us, that are going to actually run us over if we don't address them at some point fairly quickly. So, thank you, Mr. Espanda, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, my fellow Alderman, for their concerns.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Rosado.
Your Honor, you know, I do remember when Mr. Espanda, when we were, had a subcommittee hearing, and we were voting on something, and I made the comment that it doesn't really matter how we vote on this, because the Board of Water Commissioners is going to do whatever they want to do anyway. So, I mean, I, I look at this as basically just accepting a report. I mean, I wish that we could actually vote on this and actually make an effect, because I would vote against it, but we're just, you know, accepting a report. At the end of the day, you guys are going to do whatever you want to do. I wish we had much more influence over that matter, but it is what it is. But again, I thank you for all the steps that you're trying to make in order to save the city money in any, any way, shape, or form. I know it's not an easy, easy job, but I just, you know, I wish that everything we voted on in this council would actually make an effect, every single thing. But there are things that we, that are brought up here that we really don't have any effect on, and it's one of those things that I don't really like voting on, but it is what it is. Thank you.
Alderman Hargraves.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take note that I thought it was disrespectful for one other person to repeatedly interrupt another other person while they had the floor, and as a former member of the Ethics Commission, I can attest that you only have a conflict of interest if you have financial gain for you or your family. And as a member of a, of a department, your salary is set by a union contract, so the 5% increase does not have any effect on your direct salary. Thank you.
Alderman Gantonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. And just to kind of add to what Alderman Hargraves was going to say, or just said, I think this council has a long history of Parker Rec employees and Health Department employees and School Board employees that served, and I don't necessarily remember them ever being questioned in the manner that Alderman Polk, Polkowski was this evening.
Alderman Carlosi.
Your Honor, the good Alderman Gantonio is absolutely correct, because they always stepped out of the room. You now have a, you now have a department head or an assistant department head who got up and spoke. So, it's not just an employee of the Water Department, it's one of the, I believe, the assistant department head of the Water Department. So, I mean, I could be, I could be wrong on the title, but it certainly isn't a position of supervisor or department head position. So, I think clearly, I'm not going to make a big issue of this tonight. It's, it's not for me to make, but clearly, the easiest thing would have been for the good Alderman to not have spoken at all. I would have shut up and not said anything, but when he gets up and speaks on something that I think is a clear ethical violation, a clear conflict of interest, I'm sorry, I'm going to make my, my thing. You guys want to continue talking about it? Shame on you.
This is just a reminder that all questions need to come through the chair. Alderman Polkowski, did you have a question that would need to come through the chair directed at something related to Item K?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Are we ready to take a vote? All those in favor of Item K signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries for the record. Alderman Carlosi, Alderman Sanchez, and Alderwoman Black are no. Moving on to Resolution Number One. Alderman Gantonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to accept and adopt Resolution Number One.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Salerno.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution Number One has to deal with the creation of a tax increment finance district and master plan for the district. I'm just going to read two quick passages from, from the resolution to kind of give an overview of what this is. And the third, whereas, it says, "The city will capture 50% of the future increased assessed property values within the district for an anticipated term of 30 years and utilize up to 100% of the real property tax revenues generated from such increased property values, along with private funds to fund infrastructure improvements, economic development programs, telecommunications, infrastructure, traffic and road improvements, streetscaping and administrative costs." And then, if you move to one of the last, whereas, it says, "The creation of the district will help to provide continued employment for the citizens of the city and surrounding region to improve and broaden the tax base in the city and to contribute to the economic growth and well-being of the city and state of Connecticut." I think this is, is a good plan, and it's another tool that we will have in our toolbox to try and spur economic development in our city and ultimately grow our grand list and attract more businesses and more jobs. I know Mr. Konig is here if there are questions, and I urge adoption.
Thank you very much, Alderman Gantonio. Do any Aldermen have any, Alderman Rosado?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know when this first came up to one of our subcommittee hearings, I was kind of questioning it, because I'm not a big proponent of TIF, as far as in regards to how it's been implemented in other areas and states across the nation. However, during the presentation, they did allude to the fact that Connecticut and how they went about with, with TIF financing was better, and it gave more flexibility to cities and communities across our state. Now, this, this was passed by the state in October of 2015, and I know I'm critical of some of the things that happened in the state, but this is one thing I'm actually content with, with how they went about the TIF legislation, which was, it's PA 15-57, was an act establishing tax increment financing for the State of Connecticut to allow communities to wait, to use TIF the way it should be. Now, though it was on the books for a while, it was limited and burdensome that few projects ever used it. The complex procedural requirements were not only convoluted, but also opened up projects to rejection at various stages. The process of setting up a TIF also largely played out at the state level, including numerous players such as the Connecticut Innovations Board, the State Bond Commission, and joint standing committees. The new legislation allows individual municipal legislative bodies to establish their own tax increment districts in accordance with the new requirements. Now, the new law, and there's a lot of great things about what Connecticut did in regards to TIF. One of the things is that it defined a broad set of uses of TIF revenues, including but not limited to capital financing, property assembly, professional services, maintenance, and operations and other costs. It also permitted municipalities to form TIF districts that include both the project itself and other properties that will experience property value increase as a result of the project. It also authorizes municipalities to levy benefit assessments that are an additional assessment on properties within the district, which allows the municipality to finance construction improvements, repairs, and rehabilitations within the district. And it also allows funding to flow to economic development, environmental improvements, and employment training associated with the district. That means that the TIF revenues can be used to fund things, including economic development programs, economic development revolving loan funds, investment funds, services, and equipment necessary for employment training and specific uses associated with the district. One benefit of this is that a workforce development program could be created and funded to train workers needed by new businesses at a major development project. So, with the overall process has been drastically streamlined, TIF districts also include property that is either blighted, in need of rehabilitation or conservation, or suitable for certain types of development. Public-private partnerships are the model for economic development in today's economy. So, this is what's great about this TIF, is that the new TIF legislation enables communities to better engage the private sector to implement projects by offering an effective new funding mechanism. Local officials and economic developers can now use TIF the way it should be used in order to achieve its intended purpose. So, I say this as a person that's been studying TIF funding for, for a long time. I'm 100% behind this. I like what the State of Connecticut did with it. I like the options that it's given our municipalities or cities across the state, and I hope that everyone else on the council is behind it as well. Thank you.
Alderman Sanders.
I'm just full of comments tonight. Thank you, Your Honor. I have some concerns. I think this is a great innovative tool for the City of New Britain. I've gone back and forth. I spoke with a few people. I didn't have as much time to speak about it, but unfortunately, I just wanted to, for the record, you know, make it clear that I can't support this at this time. I think the State of Connecticut has done a wonderful job in, you know, manipulating the TIF to work in a better way for communities like ours. Again, I think it's an innovative tool. I just think that, you know, our mill rate is a little bit high, and I think that any, any increase in revenue should be offset by reducing the mill rate. And I went round and round with a few people, and I know the numbers are not that great, and it's not going to lower it that much. But on the other hand, I don't know if the people outside that district are going to be happy with, with having this within. And that's a personal opinion that I'm just kind of stating for the record, because I do believe it's an innovative tool that can be used. I just don't think that I could support this at this time. Maybe in the future I would, but I cannot support it tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to express that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanders. Alderman Sanchez.
Three, Your Honor, to whomever I speak to regarding the TIF district.
Well, it depends on what your question is regarding. If it's regarding assessments, we would direct it to...
It would have to do with the finances, not necessarily the, the structural aspects of the legislation. So, finances, I would assume.
Mike, you want to...
Please, Mike. Yep.
Can you ask the question first, Alderman, then we can determine who will answer it?
So, we talked about the pros, and I appreciate Alderman Rosado's perspective in, in research. Can you talk about some of the potential risks behind TIF districts? Some of the red flags that can potentially come from them, along with the positives?
There haven't been a whole lot of TIF districts done in Connecticut, so there's not a lot of history for a municipal TIF. I think we would be the second TIF district created in the state. I don't know. I guess I'd have to think about that, what the downfalls would be.
So, just on the strengths of, I would assume, other districts throughout the country, and I know demographically, these things can be very different from place to place. Have you found in your research, or, I'm sure Mr. Konig's research, some of the harm potentially or the good that can come to businesses through us accepting essentially this financial district?
I don't think we've seen any harm. I think one of the, one of the benefits of doing a TIF district, and remember, this is just a tool in the toolbox. It's not that we have to use it today. We might never use it. It's available to us if we should, but the benefit comes from when there's critical mass, larger projects.
Okay. So...
The third question.
Yeah, I appreciate your answer. And so, from a funding perspective, given that this would be a reserves fund of some sort, correct if I'm wrong, how would we delegate those additional dollars?
Those dollars go back to, directly to benefit the projects that are taxed through the additional TIF tax. Does it go back into the general fund?
No, I understand. That's what I'm talking about. That, that pot of muddy, essentially, how is it delegated to those businesses, and who authorizes it? How is that process going to essentially come about?
Again, 50% of the revenues for any kind of increases in assessment would go into this TIF fund, and this TIF fund would be utilized by the city to, you know, for any kind of public works projects or anything like that, but it would be dedicated for the, for the property within the district. Okay? So, that would be, again, on a vote of the council, but the monies would be there within, for the TIF district itself. If, if it's determined at any point in time that, you know, monies need to be moved from the TIF district back into the general fund, there's an escape clause for that. So, any time, the transfer of money into the TIF fund is not a, a rock-solid thing where the money has to stay there. So, if there's money needed back into the general fund for other areas of town, certainly the council can make that transfer.
Okay.
Well, the, the money could be used to help finance projects within the TIF district. The money could be used for infrastructure improvements within the district. It's basically identifying a zone, an area that was, that's been identified to say that, hey, we, we want to have some development here, we want to have infrastructure improvement in, in this area, so, and through that, we're going to see, we're going to capture 50% of assessment increases in that zone. The base here would be the grand list of October of '16, so as assessments change over time, 50% of the assessment increase, the increment, the revenue that would be related to that would, because of whatever the mill rate is at the time, would be, that money would be transferred to a TIF fund. And just like Alderman Rosado pointed out, it could be used for all sorts of employment opportunity, it could be used for infrastructure things, it could be used for helping finance a project within the district. It's really trying to help an identified zone to be improved.
So, if that 15, 15, thank you, first of all.
Sure.
So, that 15% in additional, I would assume, dollars, if, if it comes down...
down to that, and we do see that money, it would sit, uh, in this pot, if you will, but would that fifteen percent be enough for the businesses if they all come through the door and say, "We, we all want to benefit from additional..."
Right. Uh, a- at first, it would, we, like, with the creation of a district, there is, there is no money at this point in time. Uh, the, the money would build over time if assessments increased within the zone, and then the thought is if there is developments, then it's a catalyst for all the other properties within the zone, uh, to have their assessments go up, because their market values would increase because of the development happening around them. So, you know, more money would go into that TIF district, uh, per se, and, uh, at that point in time, uh, there would be enough, uh, uh, there would be enough money to help fund certain projects. Now, there is a, um, a minimum in there, in, in the master plan as far as, like, a million dollars, uh, for, for properties looking for tax increment financing within the zone, and there would be an advisory, uh, board, uh, to approve what kind of, you know, these projects would have to meet a certain criteria in order to get any kind of financing within the zone.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Sure.
Thank you. Alderman Carlosi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, you, you said something which I want, I'm sorry, Mike.
No.
Um, so you said what we're talking about is the increase in the assessment.
Correct.
So provided this, uh, let's just assume, assume that this is going to get approved tonight, the mayor signs it, and I think it goes into effect, Your Honor, upon your signature, or ten days later? Is that correct?
Can you say that one more time?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So, let's assume that, that we vote on this tonight, and you sign it.
Mm-hmm.
Does that go, does the, does the district effectively get created upon your signature? Okay. We're in the process of...
But, well, sorry, but it, I mean, it won't, in theory, I mean, the, the, it, the district exists, but there won't be any money in it unless you see a development, a sizable enough development that happens to be able to put additional assessed value and revenue in that fund. So, it may be there, but we may not see it for quite some time.
So we're going to talk about, we're, I'm going to, I'm just going to focus a little bit on this increase in assessment for a moment. So, someone owns a building, downtown, there's the old Porter Building, for instance, and they decide to pour a million dollars in, of improvements into it. You go out and you do the assessment, and you say it's now worth X number of dollars. Fifty percent of that differential between what it was worth prior and what it is worth after the, the improvements is what's going to be set aside into this TIF district. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's on, that's on someone who makes improvements to the buildings. How about just a general, now we're also in the process of doing reassessments, correct?
Yes.
And when are those values going to be completed?
For October, uh, one of two thousand and seventeen, so...
Okay. Let's just assume that there is a two or three percent increase in values throughout the city.
Yes.
Now, fifty percent of that increase is automatically going to go into the TIF district as well?
Yes, it's any increase in assessment for any property related in the zone.
Regardless of whether they did improvements, just by, just by the very nature that it increases?
Yes.
How, how, how large is the zone? How many acres do you know offhand?
Uh, acres? I don't have an overall, uh, acreage. There's about fi- there's five hundred and fifteen properties located in the zone.
So potentially, the money could start increasing if, if in October we have a, an increase in our assessment values. Well, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping there is, Your Honor. Uh, we have some realtors, uh, in this room that are banging out properties left and right, so I think we have some good values out there. And, uh, assuming that there are increases in value, uh, we will have some monies, uh, pretty soon in that, into that particular, and then that would be on our budget for next year, that that would actually come into play. Is that correct?
The grand list of October one of seventeen would be for fiscal year nineteen.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Hargreaves, followed by Alderman Rosado.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may, through to downtown director, Jerry Emilio.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you. Uh, what do you see as the advantages and the disadvantages of adding this TIF zone?
The advantage is, as has been presented before, it's a tool for the, your economic development director to use when, uh, tracking businesses. Um, the other thing that really hasn't been talked to is the developer can use it as, uh, equity when going for financing. He can use it as his layered financing, because when you have a TIF zone, the banks, the financial institutions actually look at it as a piece of, uh, uh, something that assures the development. It's a commitment by the city to, uh, assure that the area surrounding will also be developed. So, um, for example, um, Richard Brown with Ellis Commons, if he were to develop that project, and if that were to then be, i- i- I believe it is in the TIF zone, actually, it's in the footprint, he is assured then that the neighborhood will come up with the property. So what it does, it enhances the entire area around one project. The other area, um, has been bandied about, and I believe it was presented several years ago, uh, to the city, is taking the entire block where, um, the Main Street, Bank Street, Columbus, uh, Street block, and possibly leveling that and building a large parcel that would be multi-story, would be up-to-date, and that would, uh, then, um, enhance, or the developer would look at it and say, "Hey, this is something I know you're going to now take, and you're going to enhance every other property around." The pitfalls, uh, as, um, your finance director said, um, we really don't have any experience with that. Um, I think there's a fear that the, uh, taxes that'll be retained in the district will therefore not go to the general fund, but you got to remember something. You have nothing go to the general fund now, okay? You have what's here now, which is insured, it's locked in, okay? So you will never have that taken away from the general fund. The enhancements won't come unless you give a developer something. I once had a conversation with the mayor, and she said developers are always looking for something. Well, that's what they do. They don't spend their own money, they borrow money, they finance all their projects, they very few of them stick their own money in projects, they use other people's money. And then they are here to make money. That's all it is. They're not here because they live in the city like us, they're not here because they care about the community services, they're here to make money. So, you have to look at it that way. The, you're not losing anything because you're getting nothing now, okay? So when you, when people say, "Oh, you're taking it away from the east end of town, you're taking it away from the north end of town," they're not getting it now, okay? They will get fifty percent of that will go into the general fund. So that's the, the only fear, I think, that you have is the fear of, uh, something that doesn't exist.
So you feel this would be enticing for more developers?
Absolutely. Already, I believe, um, it's been talked about, and, and I haven't been part of these conversations, but the first part of Columbus Commons is not, they're not looking for the TIF, but when they build their second tower, it might be something they want to utilize. Uh, I'm certainly think they don't want to put a fifty-eight million dollar structure and have, uh, uh, the, the flip side of the post office sit vacant forever. They're going to want that to be developed, and what they'll then be able to do is maybe the Tofano site will in fact be able to be developed, because there'll be extra revenues in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can also look at it this way, too, and I think Director Emilio might, might back me up on this. When you're talking about utilizing a TIF district, you're not talking about a tax abatement either.
No, and they can't do the two. That was another piece.
Exactly.
You can't have both.
So you take advantage of the TIF, that's one thing. Um, they're not coming here asking for an abatement.
A- and by the way, just a plug for, uh, Mike Koenig, he actually taught the lawyer who actually wrote the law a few things, so you have in him a, a very knowledgeable guy on the TIF, and, uh, I hope you pick at his brain if you have deep, deep questions, because my brain doesn't go that deep, and his does.
Thank you, Jerry, very much. Alderman Rosado.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, to Mike, a question for you, sir. Um, I think one of, one of the things I felt to mention, and what I believe is one of the highlights of what the state, uh, passed in regards to TIF, um, is that the legislation, um, including allowing municipalities to issue general obligation bonds versus revenue bonds. Um, can you talk in depth of why that's beneficial for a municipality like New Britain?
Um, I would defer that maybe to our finance director, uh, for that.
I'm not sure where you're going with that. Can you repeat the question?
Uh, one of the highlights of the legislation, um, was that it include, it, uh, it included allowing municipalities to issue general obligation bonds versus revenue bonds. Um, so could you talk in how that, the fact that, um, issuing general obligation bonds versus revenue bonds is more beneficial for the city as far as regards the TIF funding?
I think it's actually the opposite.
The opposite?
The opposite would be true.
Okay.
So typically, these things are done on a revenue bond basis, where the revenue that comes in from the additional TIF money goes to pay the proceeds of the bond, which usually is taken out, um, for the developer, for the beginning stages of the project. In this particular case, in the city of New Britain, the one thing we don't want to do is add any more geo-debt.
Right.
Um, there's, there's never an assurance that you're going to get that money back.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So I, I think that's...
So, so are we trying not to go that route when it comes to the TIF funding, not going with, uh, general, um, obligation, whatever, general, uh, obligation bonds, and still sticking with revenue bonds?
I think we're not issuing bonds at all, correct?
At all, okay. I just want to clarify that.
We, we...
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
We wouldn't have to. Alderman Floyd?
Yes, thank you. Um, and if I could just ask a question of Mr. Emilio again, if I could.
Just remember, I'm not on your payroll.
You're right, you have all the time in the world.
Yeah, all the time in the world for you.
Uh, Mr. Emilio, I, I, can you, the, uh, when the TIF came up, I think it was, do you recall exactly when we started this, uh, with, when we involved with yourself?
Uh, Connecticut Main Street had a, uh, opportunity to get a grant, Connecticut Main Street Center, in the end of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, and...
I applied for a grant from the downtown district, because we're the member. Um, we received a grant in, uh, two thousand, beginning of two thousand and sixteen.
And, and, and do you recall, and, and I think you do recall, but, uh, do you remember the first, uh, session that we had? Um, it, it involved the downtown district members, correct?
Yes, yes. We, we had, we had meetings with developers, property owners, the council sat in, members of the council sat in. Um, that was the, the, uh, before the handoff really to the city, which the chief of staff had really spearheaded, uh, with, with Steve Schiller and, 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 uh, and I believe Kenny Malnowski was involved in the beginning. We, we sat down with a lot of people.
Correct.
And, and had a number of meetings. Um, there wasn't, a- and the public was invited also, uh, to those meetings, we, we asked, and, and there weren't really, uh, many, uh, negative points.
And the town, the downtown district, uh, came around to, I mean, I think there were some, some, it were early skepticism, but, but, uh, they came around once some of the, all this was explained to them.
Yeah, I, I think that when you realize the downside is, is, there isn't much downside. Um, you know, again, you get past that fear, as I said earlier, of losing something, well, you're losing nothing, because you have nothing, you know? So you lose nothing.
And, and I, and thank you for, for your responses. I was just sort of just clarifying that, obviously, this is an innovative, new, an innovative approach to looking at long-term finance possibilities, and, um, the fact that the town, the downtown district members were involved is really the point I'm trying to make. I think it's really crucial that we recognize that, it wasn't done in a vacuum, um, we've had numerous meetings, uh, all the information that's been provided by the council members just now, today, is information, obviously, is, uh, has been reiterated, um, has been accessible and available, so I, I just want to say that we really made that effort, and I think it was good for us to present some of the information, the general public could see that through the, um, uh, through our own station being, being presented now, so I certainly, uh, urge adoption and, and want to say I support it, and I want to thank, uh, the downtown district, uh, and all the members of the council for doing the work that they've done to bring this forward.
Yes, and, and just a point of information, uh, Windsor Locks actually, uh, is the first one to put it in place. They took an old mill on the river, and they're developing a downtown district around the mill, so they're creating a new downtown. Um, the other one that, uh, we just missed out on being the first, but, um, the other one, uh, was, um, Collinsville. They've actually, uh, accepted it, but they've kind of shelved it, because they don't have a developer yet, but, uh, those are two ways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Carlosi?
Thank you, Your Honor, Mr. Emilio.
I feel like Ray. Ray, but I go to the gym every morning. Thank you, thanks, Ray. Yes...
You explain you will lose nothing because you have nothing?
Yes. Um, if you don't give the developer something to come to the city, whether it's a tax abatement, okay, uh, or it's a TIF, they're not going to come. The chances are, they, they don't come. Again, developers need to be enticed, they need to be wined and dined, they need to be taken out for a few drinks, you know, they, they need to be loved. And how do you love them? You love them by giving them things. You give them tax credits, you give them abatements, you give them a TIF. Um, if they don't develop, if they don't come, if they don't have something to be enticed with, they don't come, they don't build, so you're not losing any tax. There's, there's no, there's no new taxes, okay? That's just, they'll sit fallow. I, I don't think Zenith would have built the building if you didn't give them the twenty, how many years is twenty-year tax abatement? No. Okay, so whatever it is. Um, so they build it because they get tax abatements, and they build it. So, the, the idea that you're losing anything i- is kind of short-sighted. It's not, it's not bigger picture. The bigger picture is to, is to entice somebody to come in and put in a hundred-million-dollar development in your downtown. Now, remember, it's not just the downtown district. This incorporates the enterprise zone, goes all the way down to Ellis Street, it's much larger than the downtown district. Actually, we struggled to, to, to add and cut, and Mike did it again, I'm going to give Mike a comment, he did a great job. But that's, that's what I mean by you, you're not losing...
I find, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I find that analogy a little interesting, you know, it's like the banker who calls somebody who owes two hundred dollars on their credit card and their pass due, and they're out of work, and they keep on getting that phone call every week, "Where's your money? Where's your money? Where's your money?" And then there is the guy that owns, that owes the bank a hundred million dollars, and the bank calls, "Hey, can we go out to lunch? Can we go out to dinner? Like, when are you thinking about paying us back? You know, what are your plans?" Uh, I'm all in favor of development and having developers, because certainly you can't, you don't have a community without them. But there seems to be a lot of things that are done, and, and I have, there are parts of this that I do, uh, really, really like, uh, and it seems like there are things that we are constantly doing for developers. Here's a question. What are we doing for homeowners to say, "We need you to come into town to buy properties"? How do we entice them? Are we taking them out to, for a drink? Are we taking them out for lunch? Are we, are we doing all those things? Are we, are we giving them a TIF district also?
Well, you are, because fifty percent of the generated tax is going to go into the general fund. So fifty percent of your, your excess tax goes into the general fund, so really, that goes back to your, your working-class guy, you, goes back to your working-class girl, your person who owns the homeowner. Uh, it goes into their streets, goes into their infrastructure. We can put in new pipes. So yes, it does go back to them.
Interesting way to look at it. I, I, you know, I like, I like, I like Jerry too much to really respond to that, Your Honor. But that's, that's definitely an interesting answer.
I, I thought you'd like that, Carla.
Uh, you might have a better job in DC right now, but, uh, okay, Mr. Emilio, if I can...
Do you know of any openings?
Uh, there may be quite a few.
FBI.
On sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue. Your Honor, through you to... Through you to, uh, to Mr. Koenig, please.
There's probably one in room two.
Uh, Your Honor, through you to Mr. Koenig. Mike, question?
Sure.
Uh, I understand totally, the guy that's, that buys a building, puts in a hundred thousand dollars' worth of work, and you're going to go out and assess it, I understand all that. Can you, can you help me understand why just an increase, so, just a, just a general increase in the assessments because of, you know, property values going up in the city as a whole, why these five hundred properties would, 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 why, why we would then have would, why we would then have the TIF on all of those when they did no work to their property? Why is all that money for that going into the TIF as well?
Well.
And not just people that do repairs to their buildings to increase the value of their building?
The simple answer to that, Alderman, is that's the legislation. So every year, I have to certify the assessments of all properties within the TIF, okay? And then I have to take the base here, which is the grand list of 16, and whether it's 2017, 18, 19, whatever it is, whatever the difference in assessment is, I have to do a calculation of the increase and/or decrease. And the net result would be the 50% of that assessment-related increase in the TIF would be trans, whatever the mill rate is at the time, that revenue or potential revenue would be transferred to the TIF fund. It's just how the legislation's written. Potentially, some of that would be because some properties utilize the TIF as far as taking advantage of it, developing property within the TIF, and any other properties within the TIF benefit because somebody adding value to a property within the TIF helps prop those other properties up and increase their values as well. So when the legislation was concocted, it was, that was probably considered in it.
My last question. Do you think it would be a problem down the road if there was enough, if there was so much money in the TIF that the city actually needed to reduce that to put it into the general fund? Do you see it being a real complicated procedure to do that? Or you think it would be pretty much a decision left to the executive branch and the legislative branch of the city to make that?
My understanding with the law is it would be a vote of the council, it would be a transfer of funds from the TIF fund over to the general fund. And it can happen at any time. So whether it's a portion thereof or what have you, so. It's just that properties within the TIF, it's just not to benefit, you could have a lot of infrastructure development within the TIF, but you could also, you could build a firehouse outside the TIF zone, but if the fire protection for properties within the TIF zone, it would provide protection to those properties within TIF, you could use the monies there instead of going out for other bonding or whatnot. So there is an out clause, and that's probably one of the things that when all this was talked about in committee and through various meetings I had, there's a definite out clause as far as being able to transfer monies if need be.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Giantonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you, I'm not sure, Mike, if you can answer this or if this will need to go to Corporation Council bizarre. A budget transfer like that from the TIF back to the general fund, would that require like a two-thirds majority vote or would that just be a simple majority for a transfer like that? And I know this is probably.
I don't know. To be honest with you, I'd have to take a look at the charter provisions and also the, more importantly, the enabling statute. I do know that when I looked at this briefly, and I really wasn't involved in this too much in putting this together, but I did look at the enabling legislation. There is a clause in there, as Assessor Koenig mentioned, that says that the municipality can dissolve the district at any time by vote, assuming that there are no bonds outstanding at the time. So there's a mechanism, you know, Mr. Koenig is correct, there is a mechanism by which this council, you're not, will retain control over this, you're not relinquishing authority, you know, in perpetuity, so.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for the record. Alderman Sanchez, Alderman Carlosi, or no? Resolution number two, Alderman Hargraves.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt resolution two.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rosato.
Resolution two is about a change to the rules concerning the parks in the City of New Britain. We did have some discussion last week in committee. There were some proposals put forward that not all of them were met, and we'll leave up to discussion to this body tonight. I urge adoption, I guess.
Sounds so convincing. Any questions or comments on changing the park hours? Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Alderman Hargraves. I know in committee, we had a few questions and concerns. So I was just wondering, since the committee last met till this evening, were those concerns that you had, were they adequately addressed and answered through you to Alderman Hargraves?
Would that question be more appropriately directed at Director Barberi?
I mean, if I may answer, I did put forth a amendment to the agenda and it was not approved by the subcommittee, just to reiterate that.
I believe your question may be more appropriately directed to Director Eric Barberi. So your question, let me just correct the question, that the concerns that were expressed at the committee meeting, has anything changed in this ordinance since the committee meeting? Correct?
Correct or no?
The only, the concerns that were raised last week, I know Alderman Hargraves brought up wanting to go to 11:00 PM instead of 10:00 and then reducing the fine, but it was discussed at subcommittee level and it was, those changes were voted down and it came back as written to, back to this full body.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Alderman Carlosi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Why are we doing this? Mr. Barberi? What's wrong with what we have currently with signs that we have that the park is closed, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, so we looked at it, the current language that's in there is all over the place by park and it really doesn't make any sense. There's no rhyme or reason to it. There's no backup to why it was done that I'm aware of. So we looked into about 20 different municipalities, checked what they're doing in their towns. They all were going pretty much a, you know, dawn-to-dusk scenario, half hour before, half hour after. And they are all, when we made phone calls as well, all shared the same concerns of they didn't feel that people belonged in the park once it's dark. Except for those exceptions where you have recreational activities that are lit or it's a special event that's been approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission, those kinds of things. With the exceptions that are in there also, if you're going from one part of the city to another and you need to go through the park because that's one of the ways to get through, then that's an exception. Willoughby Park, you know, has things that go on, you know, later than 10 o'clock and things like that. So those would be some of the exceptions that would happen. Walnut Hill Park, with the nature of the hospital being there and doctors and nurses walking at all hours of the night and a lot of people using it early in the morning, we made an exception with the Loop. But we did take out the Rose Garden area because we've had a lot of calls and complaints about what goes on in that particular area at night. So that was taken out of there so that the police could do their job if it was deemed actions that were not appropriate for the park.
My question was going to be about the doctors and the nurses and the people at the hospital that are staying overnight with sick ones and their opportunity to go out and just take a breather in the park. And so you've mentioned the Loop will remain open, but the Rose Garden, short walk away, will be shut down. They won't be able to go and.
Correct, and the Loop is pretty well-led and, you know, there hasn't been a lot of issues around the Loop as much as there has been up top by the Rose Garden.
And right now, is there not, I mean, right now, we do have "Parks Closed" signs or are they, is it just there's no enforcement?
There's really not, it's not very well, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing this, because once there is a fine designated, then the signs can go up designating that specific ordinance with the fine there so that the police can enforce it appropriately. So there needs to be more signage. It's not very well-done. In fact, all the parks need better signage and more kind of modern signage, and that's one of the things we want to do as part of this.
So as you know, we can do all kinds of legislation, we can write all kinds of ordinances, they then need to be enforced. We can continue to, you know, write and write and write, but if there's no enforcement activity, you're not, you don't have people that can enforce these rules, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Your Honor, may I call on the chief, please?
Sure, Chief Wardwell.
Good evening, Chief. How are you tonight?
I'm good, thank you.
Do we have the manpower or you think this, do you think this is easy for your staff to be able to enforce?
We police the entire city, so, including the parks. I did review what's proposed. It's easy to follow. We like that.
So you think it's pretty clean-cut?
It is.
Today, tell me, Chief, today, if there is a problem in one of the parks and we find loiterers there at 11 or 12 o'clock and your men or ladies are in the parks, are they able to actually tell them to get out of there or do they not listen or we don't have enough?
That is what we do. If we can take enforcement action like a city ordinance, that simplifies things for us. We're not sending them to court, we're writing them a ticket.
So this will make it a little easier to enforce?
It would.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further questions regarding this? Alderman Hargraves?
Thank you, Your Honor. If I may, through the Corporation Council.
Sure.
Is it possible to make any amendments to this resolution on the floor here tonight?
Sure, you can, Alderman, you're free to make whatever proposed amendments you'd like. If you make a, I will advise you that if the council votes on an amendment and changes the substance of this order. So for example, if you were to change the times, which I think this is where the discussion's going, you'd have to send this back to subcommittee for a public hearing, according to our ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Giantonio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to Chief Wardwell. Chief, you touched on this when we first introduced this, before we sent it to committee. If we pass this, your officers aren't going to walk into a park, see two kids playing basketball at 10 o'clock at night and hand them a $100 fine. I mean, we're going to say, you know, "Hey, guys, the park's closed, you know, finish up your game and get out of here." And, you know, it's really a tool if people don't listen.
They wouldn't be playing basketball because we're turning the lights off after 10 o'clock.
No, but my point is, it's not going to be walk-up, give someone a ticket without.
We don't do business that way in the city. I think you've seen that through the years with the way we operate. We will try to, we always try to seek cooperation first. If that doesn't work, then there's a ticket.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Collins.
Thank you, Your Honor. Make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number three.
Seconded by Alderman Pabon.
Thank you. Resolution number three, I'm going to read it. Whereas in the United States alone, there are approximately 700,000 people living with primary brain and central nervous system tumor. There are 80,000 new cases to be diagnosed this year. And whereas brain tumors can occur at any age but are the most common cancer found among these between the ages of zero to 14, and the primary cause of cancer-related deaths among children in this age group. And whereas brain and the central nervous system tumors are the third most common cancer occurring among juveniles and young adults, ages 15 to 39, and the third most common cause of cancer deaths in the age group. And whereas the precise cause of different kinds of brain tumors is unknown, but certain factors may increase the likelihood of developing a brain tumor. And whereas people with brain tumors often suffer from headaches, seizures, sensory motor loss, blood clots, vision loss, fatigue, depression, behavior and cognitive changes, hormone gland changes. Whereas with the other forms of cancers such as brain cancer, routine screening of brain tumors is not currently available. And whereas various organizations such as the National Brain Tumor Society are continually advocating for awareness and treatments, new trials and funding for research. And now therefore be resolved that the common council and the mayor of the City of New Britain recognize that May 2017 is Brain Tumor Awareness Month, to join in the fight against a deadly disease and encourage increased awareness of brain tumors to honor those who have suffered loss due to a devastating affliction. With this resolution, I'd like to, this one is dear to me because I did suffer a loss of my six-week-old daughter due to brain cancer, so this one is dear to me. So I definitely urge adoption. And on all the tables of the council members, you should see a gray bracelet I gave to all of you in honor of Brain Tumor Awareness Month and my daughter. So I do urge adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Collins. We are proud to stand here tonight and support Lyra, and she is very proud to be. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Pabon.
Make a motion to accept and adopt. Motion four.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Polkowski.
This is to approve the budget for the Downtown District. Let everybody know that the Downtown District, they have, they pay an extra 4.2 mils on their taxes, and we have Jerry Emorio over here. He can give you a little background information.
Everybody wants?
Yeah, I love this one. The district loves an extra tax.
A brief synopsis.
A brief synopsis. You have my annual report. It was approved by the membership on Tuesday at our annual meeting, which the mayor was gracious to give comments about the city. You're aware of what we do. We do not have a lot of fluff in our budget. Unfortunately, because we are so small, we've actually had a decrease in our assessment this year. We lost about $1 million of assessable property due to some changes and some declines in value. It's the same mill rate. There really wasn't much negative comments at our annual meeting about it. I'll answer whatever questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Emorio?
Of course.
Alderman Pabon.
Jerry, everybody downtown is a member of this Downtown District or?
No, it has boundaries. I can read them to you, they're paragraphs. No, it starts at the top of Main Street, runs to the courthouse, that length of Main Street. It extends up West Main Street to High Street, includes Bank Street, a little pit part of Myrtle Street. As you know, we had over 23% of the Downtown District disappear with the highway, which shall never be built on again. So we struggle and we struggle to, that's why the TIF is particularly important to us.
Thank you. And I urge adoption.
Any other questions for Director Emorio? Alderman Collins.
He's going to get me back for talking like a Republican.
Never. I don't play that. Your Honor, through you to Mr. Emorio. So you made a comment that your budget's pretty tight.
Yes.
You lost some revenue.
Yes.
You only have X number of dollars to work with, is that correct?
Correct.
So when you budget $224,000, you have different programs in different places that the money's going to all go to?
Correct.
Do you always spend all of it?
We have not. We've made allotment for unpaid taxes over the last few years, so we've been able to develop a reserve fund. We did, we were in, when I came here seven years ago, we were about $40,000 in the hole and we were being floated by the city, basically. Since then, we've built a reserve fund for two main purposes. One of which is we would like to buy a building. We'd like to be a property owner. We rent space and there's been some consideration at the board level to buy a building. The other is for float because we get the two tax payments, you know, and that's generally our only income, one of the little grants we can do. And also the grants, like the $10,000 for the Connecticut Main Street, we didn't keep a piece of that. We could have, but we gave it to the city so the city could hire the consultant. We felt that was better spent. So that, this budget does not, because of the decline in taxable property, this budget does not consider any retainage this year.
How much money is in your reserves?
As of March, it was 79. We're down a little bit because we did a couple of facade programs, so we're about 77,000.
So 77,000 of a budget 224,000, it's a little, just about a third.
Yeah, some bids, business improvement districts, like Manchester maintains a 50% retainage or reserve fund.
50 or 15?
50.
50.
Some others are down to 15. It's all over the place, but most do have a reserve fund.
So that would be, just so everyone gets an idea of what 80,000 versus 224 means, we have a budget coming up of 241 million. That means we would have an excess of 70 million in a reserve fund. Plus our money.
Would be nice.
No, actually, it's not, it's not nice because that means you're overtaxing.
Well.
Or you're not spending your money on what you should be doing with the money. So my next question, sir, what kind of programs do you do that promotes the downtown? I know you do the auto, I mean, the cars, the car shows, and you support different things that the chamber is doing and you support different things that the city's doing. But I'm looking for you, like, what does the Downtown District itself do to promote downtown? What do we have for advertising?
Well, you have our newest piece in your book.
Okay.
Okay, so we put.
Okay.
Okay, so, we produce these. We actually produce advertising pieces for property owners, so if they have spaces that they have available, we'll actually do the, the work for that. I mentioned earlier my comments when I addressed you in the public session, I don't think you were here.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, I, I forgive you. The, I was on time. The, this year, actually, we're already in discussion with the mayor's office to, I've been speaking to David Huck, actually, to sell some of the merchandise for the new marketing piece. That's something we'd like to do, we'd like to become, as you recall, there was a hurricane station store, do many of you remember that, run by the high school? It's sorely missed. It's unfortunate, they lost their grant money to do that. We'd like to do that. I've talked to the principal at New Britain High School, Joe Pinchera, and I mentioned to him that we would be happy to sell the items that are made, their shop, I think Alderman's Medley's pretty familiar with it, your office is across the street from them, they sell chairs, they sell a bunch of other things in their, in their, they have no outlet to sell it. So, we would like to become the retail store for the city. Of course, that means staffing. We, we, we are going through a staffing change as we speak. We also are trying to iron out the guided tours for the historical loops. We're trying to figure out in the budget where we can afford the insurance, that's the big thing nowadays. If somebody trips on the curb, whose, whose fault is it?
If I may, do you not have general liability insurance now?
We do, we do, but it doesn't, it doesn't cover that type of item. Well, actually, maybe I should talk to you. Off the record, off, off. So, there's, there's extra things. The, the one thing I did mention that we're looking into, the city really doesn't have any money to give businesses. You don't, Mofongo opened. Do you know what Mofongo got from the city? They got support and everything, but what did they get dollar-wise? Zero. What did they get from New York Commerce? Zero. You know what they got from the downtown district? $3,000 to do their windows and signs.
But isn't that money there? Isn't that what the downtown district-
Yes.
Should be doing? Okay. So, that is part of what you should be doing.
But that's part of the drawdown on the, on the reserve fund.
Okay. What are we doing for advertising businesses and the restaurants and the theaters and the shows? I mean, what are we doing to let the public know, come downtown? This is what we have. We have yo-yo ice cream, we have, you know, ranch pizza, we have hole in the wall, Trinity on Main. What are we doing?
We spend, we spend quite, actually, it's hard to believe, but that, Two for Tuesdays that I send out-
That's an email piece.
Takes a lot of time.
But it's an email piece.
It's a lot of time. Correct, correct. Well, social media, as you know, is probably the, the fastest growing types of advertising. Print media is dying, but we do advertise in the Herald. We do advertise in the, in the City Journal from time to time. We're actually, one of the new things I would like to do, if, if I'm able to, is start a restaurant consortium, much like what they have in Middletown. I've already spoken with, I haven't really approached my board yet, so it's premature, but I've spoken with somebody, Sharon Barretta does the Taste New Britain through the chamber, and I was thinking possibly about hiring Sharon for a small nominal fee to come in and start up a consortium for the restaurants. She would then go out, she would, she would go and seek advertising.
My, my last comment, I'm asking you all these hard questions, I'm asking you-
These are easy.
Through your budget, well, because, because what I'm looking for is a downtown district to be just more visible, just create, create higher visibility, that people know, and people know to come downtown, that there are things downtown that are, that are here that they may not even have a clue on, and, and quite frankly, you know, I, I, I don't, I, I think it can be ramped up, the visibility can be ramped up. And with that, Your Honor, I'm, I'm set. Thank you, Mr. Emorio.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Emorio. It's the Jim Sanders Show.
Here we go.
Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and adopt resolution number five.
Seconded by Alderman Collins. Alderman Polkowski.
Your Honor, being the new acting superintendent of water and sewer, actually the only superintendent in this room, I need to recuse myself on this contract. I, I will not profit specifically from this contract, but I, I don't think it's morally or ethically correct for me to approve a contract and then issue payments on that contract, so I need to recuse myself.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman.
Can the record please reflect that? Alderman Sanders.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
This is, this is going to allow the city's purchasing agent to issue a purchase order for $239,000 to CDM Smith of East Hartford for consulting and engineering assistance to our Public Works and Utilities Division. This kind of goes to our earlier conversation on the sewers. The short of this resolution here is that we have a lot of excess groundwater that's penetrating our sewer system, which does cost us quite a bit of money to treat. This is something we are being mandated to do by the DEEP and the EPA to come up with a plan of corrective action, which will come at a hefty price tag that we, we talked about early, earlier. Right now, they're currently monitoring areas, let's say, N1 and C9, which have been identified as high flows, which, which that means a lot of groundwater is coming into our sewer system, which is now going to Matabasset and getting treated. So, this is going to be a study, they're going to come up with a plan, so I urge adoption. This, this plan is probably going to be followed up again with, with some major repairs and restructuring. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Sanders. Does anyone have any questions? Acting Director Esponda is here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman, sorry, I just wanted to get you off the hook real quick for that one, right? Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and ref-
Oh, sorry, can the record reflect? Sorry, I know, Mr. Clerk, you're probably on that, but I just have to stay into the record that Alderman Polkowski's back in the room. Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and refer resolution number six to planning zoning and housing.
Seconded by Alderman G. Antonio.
This is in accordance with Article 13, Section 3 of our city charter, which states the mayor and council approval is required for sales, leases, and other dismersments when it comes to land. The town of Burle has a construction project, they need us to give them an easement on that. They're willing to pay us $2,700. It's kind of a good neighbor policy with a little extra in our pocket, so I urge referral. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Any questions or comments on the referral to committee? Alderman, Alderman G. Antonio seconded that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Sanders.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to accept and refer resolution number seven to the Consolidated Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Polkowski.
Again, this is another resolution that we kind of touched on a little bit earlier, but I guess the terminology being used nowadays is tools in our toolbox. Again, we took a lot of criticism about the water, but basically the city did everything that it could do with the tools that it had in its toolbox at the time. One of the biggest things that I realize, and Mr. Esponda confirms with me, is that we did not have a, any tools in our toolbox to enforce a mandatory water restriction. I can't count the amount of people I've heard to say, why don't we have a mandatory water restriction? Well, we didn't have anything on our books or a, any ordinances that we could enforce that. So, this is something that I just met only maybe a week and a half, two weeks ago, with our corp counsel, Mr. Esponda, and Justin from the mayor's office, but this work was made quite easy, and this resolution, which is five pages long, was put together fairly detailed with the help of our council secretary, Jessica Giratana, who did a phenomenal job in the research of seeing what other towns were doing. So, this is something that's being proactive, we're going to bring it to committee.